Okay, at 7:00 PM, I'd like to call the City of Barnesville Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July the 22nd, 2025 to order. First, if we could have roll call.
Richard Bastin.
Here.
Steve Bodie.
Here.
Jim Burkhart.
Here.
Joe Disney.
Here.
Rick Durnall. Caleb Forrester.
Here.
Rick Keacock.
Here.
Ann Miller. Jason Scott.
Here.
Troy Swan. And myself, Marilyn Siderwitz.
Okay, next, we have the presentation of minutes dated June 24th, 2025. Have all the members had a chance to look over the minutes?
Yes.
Is there any corrections or amendments that we need to make?
I made motion to approve minutes as presented.
Jim Burkhart makes a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Steve Bodie has a second.
Steve.
Steve, second. All those in the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, new business, docket number PC 25016 is a preliminary plat for Artesian Place. Address is on Artesian Avenue. The owner is Habitat for Humanity of Morden County.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a statement real quick? Steve Bodie, I volunteered on a group that helped advise this development. So I'm going to recuse myself from any discussion or vote on this matter.
Thank you, Steve.
Same with PC 25017, continuation.
So Steve will not be involved with 25016 or 2517, 25017. Okay, who do we have here for the presentation?
Good evening, Mr. President. My name's Joe Calder and I'm an attorney with Barnes and Thornburg at 11 South Meridian in Indianapolis. I represent T and H Investments, who's the applicant in this matter and the one following. Brian Donato from T and H is with me tonight. I'd like to hand out an exhibit booklet to each of you who will be participating.
While he's doing that, I'd like to ask Mr. Schrader, has all the certifications and everything?
Certification, green cards, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
While Brian and I might consider this all to be related to one project since the agenda and all the notices related to two, the first one, 25016 relates to a primary plat application that would subdivide 10, a little more than 10 acres into eight lots. And you can find the proposed primary plat in tab seven of your booklet and it'll fold out to 11 by 17. Earlier this month, I dropped off full-size plans to Gary and to be distributed to each of you as Plan Commission members as part of your ordinance. So this is a shrunken version of the primary plat where you can see the six lots that will be developed for single-family homes by Habitat for Humanity. My client will be developing Lot 7 for rental town home development. And then Lot 8 or the block is, remains for future development and will have to come in for its own further split if it's going to be split more than one lot. There will be public right-of-way dedicated as part of this. As you can see on the plan coming off of Artesian Avenue and that would meet all of the city's standards. We sent out notices, haven't heard any comments from neighbors. We believe that this primary plat does meet the requirements of your subdivision control ordinance. I'll have Brian step up and make any comments he might want, but I have a feeling more of his comments will be related to the following agenda item related to the development plan approval. So do you want to say anything to this or wait until we go? So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have as a Plan Commission.
So the first question I have is looking at this and looking back at what was presented in February, I see a daycare on the end lot and now you have nothing on the end lot. So it appears that you've put the daycare, in-home daycare in with the clubhouse, is that what I'm seeing? And vacated the end lot.
That is correct. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Brian, to answer the question specifically?
Hi, my name's Brian Donato with T and H Investments. Yeah, to answer your question, I believe the original presentation had the daycare separately. It's now been moved to be part of the clubhouse, so the clubhouse will be on one side, the daycare will be in the other. It's designed to essentially look like a townhome, so it'll, it'll look similar to the other apartments.
And I'm also noticing that the original, what we had come before us shows a separate playground and now that playground has disappeared because it appears the townhomes have been moved down on that side of the street.
There is still a fenced-in area that would be a play area for the daycare. I don't necessarily know whether that would include a playground part of it. The daycare provider, Hillary, well intends to furnish that space. We don't, we don't know specifically what they would put there.
Joe, you used to be having a full playground they had, like the residents. Do you want, the residents' kids, that were like a full playground, right? Correct? You were looking at? Well, what I was looking at, Mr. Bastin, was the, in the original, there shows a playground behind the daycare in this end lot that has now been vacated and then a playground area for the townhomes. And now I don't see, the playground area for the townhomes is gone. This is real quick what I'm seeing.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, there's the fenced-in space that I spoke about, but there's currently not a specific playground for the, for the townhomes.
And that maybe was the original daycare and how is it going to be now?
I believe it was originally anticipated to be about four or 5,000 square feet and...
And handle 40 to 50 kids or something like that?
I, I think that's correct.
And now?
Now it's anticipated to be, the final size is still a little bit up in the air because there was a recent change to the law which kind of requires us...
Maybe is this, is this still legal to do it this way?
It, it is still legal to have an in-home daycare. We will have to meet additional requirements to basically fire code requirements, so it'll, it'll have to be built to be, as if it was a commercial space, so that's, we're still sorting through that a little bit and may need to...
In one-story?
Correct, it is still intended to be a one-story space. So my guess is that the space will end up between 1,500 and 2,000 square feet.
I got another question, I guess. I'm confused about a little bit and I don't know, this looks like an email from somebody on the third page, it says the multi-family lot will be separated from the buyers seen as the roadway is and there's, that's the end of it, there's no to me.
I think I have, hold on one second, let me see if, let me see if I have the address of whatever. So can I see exactly where?
Yeah, sure.
I think I have it all charmed.
Right there. If you look on the third page.
Joe, you used to be having a full playground they had, like the residents. Do you want, the residents' kids, that were like a full playground, right? Correct? You were looking at?
Well, what I was looking at, Mr. Bastin, was the, in the original, there shows a playground behind the daycare in this end lot that has now been vacated and then a playground area for the townhomes. And now I don't see, the playground area for the townhomes is gone. This is real quick what I'm seeing.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, there's the fenced-in space that I spoke about, but there's currently not a specific playground for the, for the townhomes.
And that maybe was the original daycare and how is it going to be now?
I believe it was originally anticipated to be about four or 5,000 square feet and...
And handle 40 to 50 kids or something like that?
I, I think that's correct.
And now?
Now it's anticipated to be, the, the final size is still a little bit up in the air because there was a recent change to the law which kind of requires us...
Maybe is this, is this still legal to do it this way?
It, it is still legal to have an in-home daycare. We will have to meet additional requirements to basically fire code requirements, so it'll, it'll have to be built to be, as if it was a commercial space, so that's, we're still sorting through that a little bit and may need to...
In one-story?
Correct, it is still intended to be a one-story space. So my guess is that the space will end up between 1,500 and 2,000 square feet.
I got another question, I guess. I'm confused about a little bit and I don't know, this looks like an email from somebody on the third page, it says the multi-family lot will be separated from the buyers seen as the roadway is and there's, that's the end of it, there's no to me.
I think I have it on one second, let me see if, let me see if I have the address of whatever. So can I see exactly where?
Yeah, sure.
I think I have it all charmed.
Right there. If you look on the third page.
I thought one of that is... I, I, I guess I can talk about what I think that is. I believe you have in front of you the colored diagram, the plat, plat gets colored. So there's green, yellow, orange, and then blue.
That's the plot?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the green is obviously, that is, the 34 townhomes plus the daycare will be on the green, the green area, plus the stormwater retention for, for both the single-family lots and the, and the townhomes. The yellow is the, is the six single-family lots that, that will stay in Habitat for Humanity's ownership to be developed in the future. And then the orange section, which I believe is what that comment was referencing, is the, is the part of the road that, that will be ultimately dedicated and turned over to the city. And the reason for that is, I think primarily because the single-family lots are on there versus just being something that's part of the, of the townhomes.
And so the road will continue, you owned it as a parking lot?
Correct, basically it continues straight through there and it stubs into, into the blue area.
Yeah, the block.
Correct, yeah. And then the parking is off of that.
Okay.
But that would be under private ownership, private maintenance.
The green area.
Correct, yeah. And I, obviously this is the next item, but there's more details to that with the site plan submission.
Are there any other questions?
So technically, in the red, is will be the city street, which will stop right at the parking lot.
That, that was correct.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
So technically, the city plow truck with snows go around there and you stop right there.
That, that's correct, you're correct, yes.
Okay.
I, I would, I think, and I, we can pull it up. I would assume that the engineer has thought, thought about that a little bit, but I'm going to look at the drawings here and that there would be a place for them to push it, push it off to the side as it cannot be originally kept in the pile.
Well, to move things along, Reg, while we wait on an answer for your question that you brought up, I see we have attendance this evening, our Fire Marshal, Mr. Charlie Frecker. Do you have anything that you'd like to speak on, Charlie? Can I?
The only thing that I've got, and I think they're getting into it here a little bit, is with regards to some of the questions you asked about the daycare. Once we started pulling everything, that is a commercial space, commercial building, so it has to follow the building fire code and that's where we're hemmed up right now. During, of course, the meetings online with the developers, their design professional and the daycare operator, we asked how many children, which is a big thing because that's dependent on what the building has to be laid out as. And we're still waiting for those answers to come back. Outside of that, as far as the use of the land and fire access, we have no issues.
Thank you, Charlie. Did you find anything on the smell removal?
I think that is a valid issue that you brought up and looking from the, looking at the site plan detail right now, kind of off to the side there is just parking, so I think that's something that should be looked at in a little bit more detail to figure out, figure out a way, maybe talking directly with, with city staff about what we can do there.
Sure. Well, this plan is dramatically different than the original. My concerns are, so you've got kids all living possibly in the townhouse with their parents. Where are they supposed to go? Play in the middle parking lot, on Artesian Avenue? What's, what's the thought process there? And my other thought process is for the fire department is, you come in there if there's a fire, there is no way out. When we in, no way out.
There, there is a second exit.
Let's show it there.
Okay, sorry, missed that. My, my fault.
Absolutely. Yeah, the plaque probably doesn't show that as much as the site plan does.
So the original plot, I believe, had a place for the kids to play at.
Sure.
Now they have nothing, really. I mean...
Yeah, they know some picnic areas and grill station, but not, not things for, for kids to play in, you're, you're correct.
Am I seeing this correct that behind the two buildings, I would say would be to the west maybe, grilling station, picnic areas in between the two buildings. Behind that is actually a dry retention area. Is that what I'm seeing?
Correct.
So originally, how many townhouses were there?
I guess all has been 30 or 31.
How many?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four residential, like, old townhouses. There, and this related to Charlie's, Charlie's comments on the fire code, I think there being places on here where it says 35, it was, it was anticipated or is anticipated that the, that the daycare was built for something that looked like a townhome. That has changed a little bit, that needs to change to meet the cost, as Charlie had mentioned, but that was never intended to be a rental. So I just wanted to clarify that, if you saw 35 in there at all. I don't have time to remind you.
And as you look at this setup, you're, you're looking at a lot of homes, a lot of places to live, a lot of homes, a lot of rental, with a very small daycare that's going to be limited to a lot of kids that can go over there, which was not the original idea. And a clubhouse, not big at all for that many residents. I mean, I think that something needs to be taken into consideration when you're looking at this, in my opinion.
Brian, something that I'm looking for right now, and maybe you can point me in the right direction. We're right across the street from the new development of Hannah Farms. And part of what we did with Hannah Farms was on the homes that were facing Artesian Avenue, they had so much brick facade to, and I'm looking here at pictures, do you have something you can point me in or is there a plan in place for the exterior of the buildings?
So in the site plan submission package of 17, there should be some run rings of the buildings?
Yeah, there's some elevations and run rings in ten, five, and six.
And I've seen those, but I didn't see anything with brick at all.
Yeah, it is primarily study of various place.
But what we face in Artesian Avenue is the back of the building.
So obviously the front, the fronts of these buildings are towards the internal street, the backs are where the weekends are originally.
And I ask that because I also know that Habitat is, on their six homes, they're, they have provisions for larger garages, brick, to match up with what we're seeing over in Hannah Farms.
Looks like it's back down to a single, looks, looks like it were down to a single driveways, yeah, like a double for a garage.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I may share something with you. You're exactly correct, what we put in place, or you people did with Hannah Farms, even if it's the backside of the home, it faces Artesian Avenue, it gets a percentage of brick up to the windows so high.
Yes, I remember that.
So you'll have the same, it should be the same call here with this project.
Okay.
Now, maybe these are petty things, think like this, you've got that many homes, rentals, so you've got one dumpster. Is there not, I mean, is there not an average per household of what the common traffic would be? Is, is that one dumpster to hold everybody's for a week? Maybe two?
No, that, that would be picked up into this facility, that's pretty standard. In, in terms of what T and H has experienced, so this would probably be an eight-yard dumpster that gets picked up twice a week, that's, that's what we usually contract for. For, for 34 apartments, we typically wouldn't do two dumpsters in full address, it would just again be one that gets picked up twice a week.
And the other, one of the things I guess, that was from the original plan to this plan, is the first building has moved south.
Correct.
Like three apartments, or three townhomes.
Yeah, the whole, correct, they, they all shifted south.
South. I guess that's south.
I think, I think it's...
I think it's, I'm directional challenged, sorry.
Yeah, page, page left.
Yeah.
Left to center.
How does this clubhouse compare to other products that you've done? I know the original we had, it was quite a bigger notice brought up. What would that, in making it smaller compared to other things that you've done? You know, going down to fifteen hundred square feet, it looks like, or right around there?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think that's pretty typical in terms of the clubhouse, meaning there's, you know, there's enough space for, for agents to, to do their work, there's, there's a meeting office, you know, community board with, with a kitchenette that is available for rental for things like birthday parties and, and other things. I'd say this is pretty comparable. I think it's designed well from a, from a layout perspective to be functional. You know, I, I definitely appreciate the comment about specifically about the outdoor play places. I mean, I think that's something I'm definitely willing to figure out how we incorporate something else in there. And it's a, a good comment.
My only opinion, Joe, before we go, before we vote on this, is that the, something's got to be ironed out for the back of it to match Hannah Farms. And actually, if you think about it, the homes going in should match the Hannah Farms' style. So brick's a far up in the front.
Yeah, I think that is something that, that's a Habitat for Humanity thing, but I think that, that has been addressed with Habitat.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
I mean, the idea of doing like a playgrounds coating, I think that's, would be fine, and it, it makes sense given that. I mean, I think, I think just, I was pointing out the, the elevation. I think they're attractive from the back, you know, but adding that would definitely add, add something and make it more consistent within the.
Well, something that I hadn't noticed, but Mr. Burkhardt brought up, the, the units being moved from the original plans that was submitted in February. The buildings are closer together now. They were listed at thirty foot, and now they're at twenty foot. And it doesn't look like the, the entrances on either side are still opposing the ones in Hannah Farms. And again, I, I'd like to know why they was moved closer together, and then once I get that answered, I'd like to hear from our fire marshal on having them buildings that close together. That's kind of a red flag to me. I'm sure the units and their building have firewalls built into them to keep fire from spreading, but.
Joe, where are you seeing twenty foot spacing?
I'm in section seven, the first, until we pull out in section seven. I haven't really been down on my bifocals to see that, but I just noticed that when Jim mentioned that, that buildings had been moved.
If, if you look at these, whoa, this is, this is section five.
Just, just to clarify, are you talking about the townhouses?
Yes, the townhouses. Yeah, they're more than twenty.
Totally separate.
So you're, Jason, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, one inch equals sixty, I just, I measured it here, they're so very.
Yeah, if you look at.
Three quarters of an inch in the drawing, so they're.
Yeah. The, the site plan C two oh one, it shows twenty feet between, I believe that's building three and like some landscaping, like trees, bushes and something. And then it's pretty much double that, looks to be about forty foot.
Yes, that is about what I'm answering. The, the twenty foot measurement that you're saying is that with the drainage.
Yes.
Drainage.
Okay, I see the DE now.
DE, yes.
So yeah, that, that was in, on tab four, on that pullout, you could see the twenty foot measurement between that middle. Townhome and, I'm just measuring with some producer pushes or something.
And with this block plan, is there anything like Hannah Farms, that there is for landscaping or burn or anything along Artisan?
I don't believe there's anything.
There, there are, if you look, and I have, as you turn to tab four, you'll see some plantings.
Okay, I see the trees.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So there are some frontage plantings, yeah.
Okay.
And I guess one of the things to note there is we are actually, I believe we are, if you sit down from Artisan a little bit, we need the site. Yeah, Artisan is about, just looking across here is about six-ten. So the existing grade is down towards sort of the, the center of the site is.
Three or four feet.
Three or four feet down, and I think some of that will be graded, but not all of it.
Do we have any other questions for them? Could we have a discussion amongst ourselves? On what your thoughts are or concerns?
You know, I know, I know the, the power of what we're having communicated in that. But if they were to make it a two-car garage, as, as was agreed on, where is that, are they going to have to put in two less homes? Or are they going to go into the, the townhouse or?
Well, I think that's a, would be a Habitat question.
But that's what the fact you're leaving on the townhouse.
Yeah. Yeah, Joe, Joe's here for Habitat, I believe, Joe, he was very specific about the size, the width for that reason.
Yeah. Thank you. There's just a couple of observations. First of all, on the, on the garages, we are planning two-car garages. If you know anything about Habitat or not, this is unusual. We usually don't build garages for, we have, but not, not mostly. But being part of this development, this mixed-use development that is described for this special development zone out on Artisan Avenue, we are planning brick, weight, weight coating and two-car garages. We're going to still keep the houses small, decent, affordable as, as per our mission, and we think we can accomplish that with, with some designs that we're working on. But let me, let me, let me say that I understand the, the, looking at Hannah Farms and what's going on over there. But Hannah Farms is a different animal. It is a market-based development. This fitting again into your plan that called for, for a mix of housing is, is for a population that cannot exist in the marketplace. So we don't want to cheapen anything. We want to make it right, we want to build it right, and it needs to be affordable. We plan to be good neighbors so that it will not be obvious from the appearance that it's anything different than, than what you might expect in a market development. But we have to be honest, it's, it is what it is, that's what's being planned. That help?
Well, I, I can say, really, I can say, however, the people at Hannah Farms bought into a concept. When they bought into the homes to have them built, they bought into the concept of that. Now, is that fair to them that they look across the street and it's a little iffy? I think the homes further down are iffy. But that was put in place long before.
Yeah.
Hannah Farms.
I don't, I don't think you'll see iffy. It's not in our plan.
Well, and with Artisan, adding to what Rich is saying, with Artisan Avenue being a, now a major thoroughfare, going in and out of the shopping center to the schools, there's going to be more development out there. And I think that's why, not that we're trying to push stuff on these, but we want to make sure that the people coming to Martinsville that drive down Artisan play, Artisan Avenue, see common like, something that gives that the appearance that reflects Martinsville.
I, I get it, and I, I think, I think, I think you'll see that. It's our committed Habitat that you'll see that.
And I, I will just, I'll add there, you know, from TNH's perspective, I think if you look, you know, both of our website, we built them generally. But they are all very attractive communities, I think. This will be, I'm happy to have these discussions about, about those things and, you know, these will be particularly inside and the, the, the living, living space and things like that is really something special. I think that's one of the things that I really like about this community. It's something that in my world and in the workforce housing world, we don't get to do a lot of town, townhomes. We don't get to build a lot of communities that have, you know, direct outdoor spaces. It's becoming harder and harder because they're not as efficient as apartment buildings to, to make them, to make them work. Thanks to Habitat, you know, and, and their generous donation of the land, I mean, it puts us in a position to, to really create a really nice project for the people that live there, a nice community, so. I, I'm excited about that aspect of it, it's, it is something that we don't get to do all that.
So what other discussion between the members on this project?
It's kind of concerning that it downsized, but it's long, I mean, I'm good, if everything is good with the, the fire plant and the lanes coating in the back, all that stuff, if it make, if we can make sure we get it halfway like that, I think we.
I mean, my red flag, guys, is the daycare. I mean, that's, that's the one thing that, in, in February, that's something that I really, I really appreciated the size of that daycare, and now it's been removed from that third lot.
And I, you know, I mean, we're still getting the same amount of townhomes.
Correct.
So that is a concern. The other concern is it's not been approved. You know, and what I'm saying is, they haven't got it where it needs to be at this point. So I'm, I mean, I don't know contingent on those couple of things, or, you know, emotionalize or something like that, but, you know.
Well, and I believe also, and, and I'll just speak, and then we'll let counsel correct me if I'm wrong, but when we do this, we can also, because this is a Habitat along with TNH Investments. TNH Investments is separate from Habitat for Humanity. Does everybody understand that? So Habitat is donating or selling this, these other lots, because there's three lots here. They're selling the, the middle lot and the north lot to TNH Investments. So Habitat's not in control of any of this.
Well, and that's true, the, the townhouse are still being built and house for.
Workforce building.
Yeah.
Yes. But what I want to say is that we can, if, if we make a motion, we can put in that motion that these townhomes and clubhouse and daycare is built before the Habitat homes. I'm on the right in that case.
Yeah, you could, that, that's more going to their, their plan that they're, that we're on next. So right now, we're on dock in sixteen and seventeen's their plan. But yes, you could make a contingent upon development need a certain way. So hey, you're going to go here first, you're going to build these townhomes and then Habitat, you then start your homes after that's up. So, because again, this is being presented to you tonight to get as, as blood project, so you can't control how it's built.
Well, my concern, fellow commissioners, is they have downsized, and my fear is that it's financial. Part of their name is investments, really not having investments while they're downsized. Just brings a red flag to me.
Well, no, we, you know, I don't know what the, let's say, average, how many kids were in a home.
Right.
I don't know what they consider the average. But in those townhouses, if each one of those had that amount of kids, okay, is that clubhouse going, I mean, sorry, is the daycare going to take care of it? Because that was the biggest thing, am I, am I correct, that we looked at going, oh, look, they've got a daycare there.
It's something that was very attractive to me, and it was attractive to you. I mean, we didn't, commissioners didn't have any meetings outside of this, or, you know, and Rich, you mean, you've not talked about this, so. It's just something that, the daycare was something which was very attractive.
Yeah.
And now it's been downsized in that third lot.
Yeah, it's concerning, you know, we lost the playground area, obviously the daycare, you know, two kids for thirty-four homes, that's quite a few, and that is one of the needs that you're looking, you're talking to people in town, you're looking for that, and all those living in this space. You're looking, you're talking to people in town, you're looking for that, you know, those living in this space wanting it. So, you know, what happens, how does that work out once they fall? I don't think it's the size appropriate for that many homes.
Can, can I just clarify something on the daycare?
Yes, sir.
Regardless of the size, it was never intended to just, just serve the, the thirty-four townhouses. I mean, it was always assumed that there would be kids coming home. You know, it's a combination of two and three bedrooms. The three bedrooms are more likely to have kids than the two bedrooms, but there, there may be kids.
And the way it was presented to us in February was that it would be a city. I mean, other people could apply, it wasn't just for the, the folks, yeah, it was a community daycare.
I, I think it's really, I've been doing this for almost twenty years now. It's really difficult to say how many kids you're going to get, specifically how many kids you're gonna get that would be at the age that would need daycare versus school age kids, all that kind of stuff. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take, even take a guess. You know, just, I, I wanna be frank about the whole project and where we're at today. A big part of this is financial, financial drivers. We got our award towards the end of last year from IHGDA. That's the biggest source of funding that also funds the daycare and all the infrastructure improvements that will, will allow the Habitat townhomes to be constructed in the future. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on your political views, from our industry perspective, we didn't do well in the election, and it creates a lot of uncertainty. So, we sell the tax credits that we get to investors. We went into this with a price close to ninety cents per dollar of a tax credit investment. We now have bids for this project at eighty-two cents. So, there is a huge shortfall from a funding perspective. So, we've put together in any way possible a project that we think we can fund, that can get the associate, the, the needed funds. We've applied for some extra funds and get completed. We feel comfortable that we can get there. So, that's, that is the reason that we're, we're at, where we're at. You know, that being said, I, I'm hoping that the daycare gets, I think, one of the positives about some of this, the, the new codes that probably get a little bit bigger and, and be able to, to hold, to serve a few more kids. I don't have a way without other funding to get it back to what it is. I just can't, I can't build the townhouses and the daycare with the pot of money that I have.
Is your, is your financing or grant developed on that you have to have X amount of homes?
Correct. Townhouses. We, we have to build.
Okay.
The number that we committed to.
Okay.
And with this plan, we've got one, two, three lots. Lot one is what I wanna call the Habitat, two is the townhomes, and the third one is vacant. When this is all said and done, will Habitat still own the third lot, or will TNH Investments?
Let's go ask you something else, go ahead.
Uh, TNH Investments.
Okay.
So, there are six Habitat lots.
Yes.
Lot seven is the townhome lot, and then block one is the third lot, which could be split again, you know, for whatever permitted use comes down the park, so.
And so, on, on that note, Joe and Colm McCallum, the, the daycare provider, had, had submitted for some funds. There's on the plans is, there's a hashed mark area for potentially a second townhouse. They haven't been successful in getting those funds, but there is, you know, that is part of the plans and could be part of it. Obviously, this, this, this other lot is there, the unused, that could potentially be a future, could be, you know, a, a future space. I, I just, I can't commit to it at this point. And what I can commit to is supporting Phil McCallum and Joe and whatever their efforts are. One of the things I didn't, didn't get to say here is, but, you know, TNH is a, is a full-service real estate development company. So, a re-real estate company, period. So, what that means is that we do everything from the beginning to the end and property management. So, we intend to manage this, we intend to own it at least for fifteen years, which is the minimum compliance period likely, much longer than that. So, we will be members of the community and we'll be here to, to figure out what the best, you know, uses for that space. We, we, we wanna see that it's used in a way that benefits the community where it's, it's not a moneymaker for us by any means. It's, you know, it's, it's much more of what, what could eventually happen that could benefit the community.
So, forgive me if I misunderstood, but is the daycare grant dependent to run?
No, no, we, the, the daycare that is shown is, is, Colm McCallum is, is ready to, to own and operate it. We have the funds to build that.
Okay.
We were just thinking, trying to get, to get it bigger, and Joe and, and Dave and Colm McCallum had applied for some funding.
If you notice, if, if, again, if you notice on your, the plan, there is space between the daycare and block out block three for expansion, that's what, that's what Brad is talking about. Heather and I teamed up to approach the IU Belt Foundation this past year for assistance in expanding the daycare from this footprint. We were not successful, but we have not given up, and they are still playing the next year.
Okay.
Well, I think in discussions that, I think the members of the planning commission have made theirself clear that the, the kids, the daycare playground is very important.
Understood, and I'm, I don't know if to figure out where we could put it, but I'm happy, happy to add that in to define effects. Continue to see if the info bar, whatever you wanna call it.
Cause I know that Martinsville's vision is to grow, and growing is young families, and young families need parks, sidewalks, bike paths, recreation.
You do have that playground in Hannah Farms, you can see kids going over there if there weren't something here. So, it'd be the best crossing the road within that subdivision.
Well, and, and I know that the city has in their vision an expansion of a major park on Southview Drive that's just around the corner from this. And there'll be bike paths or sidewalks down there to that. But still, there needs to be something on these grounds other than what I see. So, we don't have any other questions? Like to entertain a motion for or against, or table it? If you need more information.
I'm gonna talk about, an addendum about facade facing the road, is that something you need to put?
I think that's something.
That's a, that'll kind of the next one.
If, if, if we, if we approve this, then the next one.
Okay.
Uh, because the next one will be form, uh, twenty-five oh seventeen is the final, and that's where we can insert that.
Well, I meant that we accept document number two-five-zero-one-six.
Rick Keacock has made a motion to accept PC twenty-five zero-one-six. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Jim Burkhart seconds. The motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Steve, I believe abstaining.
And Steve, you've been very good sitting there not saying a word, even though you want to. Okay, new business, let's move on. Document number PC two-five zero-one-seven is the final PUD, final detailed plans for Artisan Avenue, owner of Habitat of, or humanity of Morton County for the ten point five-one-two acres. Gentlemen, we continue.
So, we've obviously had a lot, a lot of discussion about this already, but just to give kind of a high level overview. So, Artisan Place will ultimately create thirty-four town, townhomes. It's an even mix between two and three bedroom homes. In addition to that, it'll create amenity space, which is the clubhouse. Right now, shown as the, as the, you know, there's a grill area, picnic area. And then sort of the last piece of that is the, is the daycare space. As I mentioned, you know, we have, in the clubhouse, there'd be a community room, onsite management, maintenance space. And everything has needed to really have the property function successfully. Few, few other things, and, and kind of just to rehash what I said, this is, I think, a pretty unique thing from our perspective, and then we get to pre-build townhouses versus an apartment building. I think that really provides something unique for the residents. And because of that, you know, they have, each have a front and rear patio, so actual outdoor space. And, you know, I think, I think overall, it's a, it's a good site plan. Any questions?
Business work, what contingencies then, you know, just building it to some of these things we've talked about. Every one thing you have, but.
Yes, you can put contingencies in, you can put in how you want it to develop, you can put in, you wanna see, you know, your facade, brick facade, you wanna see a daycare of a certain size, I mean, you can all, that's, this is where you put all that stuff. And I don't know if you have enough information or not, but certainly this is where you can discuss.
Well, one other thing I just wanted to note, in terms of the timeline, so as I mentioned, this project has received funding. We have commitments for, for equity and the other sources. Our hope is to move forward in this process and be ready to start construction. I'd say late fall, probably in November. Terrible time to start construction, but unfortunately, the way, the way this works is soon as you can get everybody together and get all the pieces together, you gotta start. Because the longer you wait, the more expensive it gets, unfortunately.
And they started, you're saying you're, you're gonna start, you'll break ground and get your curbs and your roads and your foundations in?
Correct, yep.
And I think that's something that not having all the information on the clubhouse and the daycare, you stated in your, the, the, our first series of questions on the document number twenty-five oh one-six, that you didn't have all the final answers on that.
Correct.
Daycare and clubhouse.
The clubhouse part of it is, that, that part of it is set, it's the, the daycare.
But the, but it's all gonna be under the same roof.
Yeah, but they're, there's, they're connected buildings, but they're, they're being designed separately.
And from what I'm understanding and what Charlie talked about earlier, that there are new regulations from the state that has to be guidelines that has to be followed as far as the structure is built.
Correct.
So, it's gonna be more designed like a commercial building?
Correct, so I, I think probably the, the biggest two things that our architects brought up and after we spoke to Charlie and, and kind of got that guidance was, so it would need to have a fire alarm system and a certain, and added entrances and exits. Those were, those were the two, two big things that, that came out of those comments. It's obviously a lot more complicated than that, and I'm not, as I'm a professional, but that's just overall my understanding.
And I would think in the fire codes, there will be some sort of a firewall and stuff in between the two Charlie's talking.
That's correct, yes.
But that'll all be in the design phase.
Correct. Once they're ready to submit the state, that would be, where that'll be called out at.
And if this is go ahead and approved, then as any plans are submitted to the building inspector's office, you would make sure that all the boxes are checked on that and that it's up to stuff.
Those documents would be shared with Charlie also.
Okay.
And Charlie's been very helpful, I mean, it's really a pleasure working with, with everybody in town.
Well, we appreciate Charlie because he takes a great effort in understanding and communicating.
Yes.
To make sure that things are right, so they don't have to be corrected after.
Yeah.
Charlie, don't let that go to your head. So, are there any other questions?
I don't think I got a question, I just got a comment, I just don't know if we got enough information to pass this tonight. You know, I, I, I think there's some questions out there that, that we need answers before we can say yea, you know? And, so, you know, I, I'm, and to table it till the next meeting anyway, till we get some answers.
And, and that, that is an option that we have?
Right, yeah, I, I think we all, we all have to be, I, I mean, obviously, it's not gonna be a, everybody, we all have to be in somewhat agreement of what it's gonna look like, correct? When they bring it back.
Yeah, well, I mean, there were things we discussed, and we can put them in as contingencies, but I'm, I'm not sure we're gonna get all the contingencies in there that we need to, to make it the way we want it to be. So, you know, I guess I'm gonna say I'm gonna make a motion that we table this till we get some more information. I'll put that as a motion.
Okay. Jim Burkhart made a motion to table this until next month, so we can get more information.
I've taken it.
Rich Bastin seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Yes.
Could I, could I just, I wanna just kind of go through my list to make sure that we're all on the same page with the things that I'm bringing back. So, I guess the first thing is adding a playground. I can kind of just consider that something we need to figure out and get in the plans. The second thing I have was the visual concerns, I'll say from Artisan Avenue. So, I, I guess a suggestion was made that adding brick wainscoting, so we can look at that from a design perspective.
And I think Mr. Strater understands what we were talking about on that, so. And I think Mr. Strater understands what we were talking about on that, so you can have communication with him.
Sure, yep. And then on the daycare, I guess it's two parts, I mean, one, it has gotten smaller. I will endeavor to make it as big as I can and to, to clarify that within the context of, of the, the new code. So I, I think from my perspective, the deliverable there would be, you know, a more detailed plan on what, what we're putting together and obviously the, you know, providing the number of children that we think that, that it could serve like a.
I think you're on the right path then.
Correct.
Yes.
Those were kind of the three big things I had, is there anything else that I'm missing?
To talk about the snow removal, were that.
Oh, yep.
Snow removal. And the reason with that, Marilyn, is there's that, the one street in front of Habitat Homes, it will be dedicated to the city and then it becomes ten.
E and H.
Yes, investments, parking lots, so the city's not gonna go through there privately. So that's the reason should be gone, a small.
Just to be clear, that, you said your company does the property management also for fifteen years, Rich said?
So we, so the, without getting into too much technical detail, so because of the funding, the, the project is required to be affordable to certain incomes for a period of, a minimum of thirty years. It's actually, I mean, I believe it's forty years. Yeah. It's, it's forty years, but specifically, there is a fifteen year initial period where it's really difficult from our perspective to not be the manager and the.
True.
And that's the period where the investor is involved, so the comment I made is we would, we'll be involved in this for a minimum of fifteen years, likely much longer than that, but that kind of initial compliance period is sort of the, you know, the, we have guarantees and things that are, that are out there for that period as well.
Is there anything else?
No.
So if there's anything else that anybody thinks of, if you can communicate that with Mr. Strater, so that as he has conversations back and forth with him, if there's anything else that somebody would like to see before they come back, that way we can move forward with this, so that they can get started on groundbreaking and get moving dirt.
Thank you very much.
I have one question, when would you like us to file the updated plans so that they're distributed to you with enough time in advance of the next meeting?
Oh, I, I would, how much time do you think it will take to add these items to the plan?
Um, I mean, yes, two to three weeks without the, the engineer and the architect who has to do all the work.
I, I understand, I need some viewing time, so nothing more than three weeks.
Three weeks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up under new business, we're gonna move right along here, docket number PC. I think Mac, Mac lived again. Docket number PC two five zero one eight, historic district approval for sign, address is eighty eight North Main. Owner is Artisan Group LLC.
Thank you.
And Mr. Feneman is out of town and Gary Oaks will be presenting. Hello, Mr. Oaks.
Hello. Uh, I got a lot of work done back there last hour, so. Kayla's here representing the community foundation, the application was by Craig Feneman, uh, because he owns the building, but I'd like Kayla to explain it to you.
Okay.
Kayla, if you could please line in.
Sure, I'm Kim Cole, president of the community foundation, and we did, with Craig Feneman, apply for approval of our signage. We are planning to move to the, the space at eighty eight North Main Street and we need to have our sign approved, so we will be renting off of Craig Feneman and Artisan Group. And we did submit the plans with the sign showing it's forty three by thirty nine and then a, a photograph there of what the sign should look like. We anticipate as soon as it's approved, space should, should be available to us by the end of summer.
Okay.
So I can have a visual, what building is that? I, I'm not very good with the numbers, what, what building, I, I know it's down by Craig Thomas.
It's currently one of the sides of Tom Fiddery, so Tom has two, they have two, he has two spots, the kind of violence, you know, less inside and then the, excuse me, the event side, and he's wanting to vacate the event side, so that's the side that we're gonna occupy.
Okay. Mr. Bodie.
I don't know if anybody else noticed, but, you know, our historic sign ordinance talks about signs not extending more than three feet, thirty six inches over the sidewalk. And this will be at least the second time we've been presented with a sign that's a little bit larger than that. I know it's not much, but I don't know how we're supposed to handle that as a group. It's supposed to not exceed thirty six inches and this is a little bit more than that.
Can somebody tell me what the idea was when they made that rule up? About how was I gonna, what was the reasoning?
The sign placement, is that what you're asking?
How far, how far can it extend down?
I can't answer that, it's something that I've had the time period of eight feet off of the base of the sidewalk and height to the bottom edge of it and wish to be able to share the dimensions that are correct.
We also, it would, should be nice if we could give a, some form to, to applicants that says, what's the square footage of your building front? And then the square footage of the sign, it looks like the sign, it's two sided, is that right, Mrs. Cole?
It is.
So it looks like it's a little bit less than twelve square feet on each side, it's twenty four square feet total. I'm assuming that the building front is adequate to have that, it's supposed to have no more than one square foot of sign for every ten square feet of building frontage. But without dimensions, I have no way of knowing that. Anybody have any ideas?
Would be in, in reference to about the size of the, is it, yeah, the boutique where the, the reporter used to be.
You're referring to Urban Market?
Yeah, but, but same.
That, that was approved, yes, that's.
Okay.
That's yours.
I don't remember the dimensions, but it was similar.
Yes, yes.
So you're saying that the urban, urban markets.
Yes.
Hangs over too far also?
Yes, which we approved.
I mean, unless it got ridiculous, I really don't know what difference would be out of what they're gonna do, clip a semi truck trailer or?
Maybe we oughta change the ordinance.
What's that?
We made it.
No, I'm, I'm dead serious, though, I, I mean, I am, it's, it's maybe the ordinance needs to be changed.
There was brackets placed on these locations around nearly four corners of the square. Brackets were designed the same, most all of them, and so you're, I think the bracket meets its standards. It's the sign, the face of the sign is what we're, we're looking at, does that sound right, Steve?
Yes, I think so.
And I'm sure it was just for uniformity of looking around, is that what it was set up, I would assume.
But, you know, I mean, where, where do we stop?
Yeah, I, I think it was to set up some limit on how far signs should stick out over the sidewalk.
Right.
You know, eight feet probably would be too far, three feet maybe is not far enough.
Yeah, none of that may be, but, you know, I mean, we have an ordinance, but if we're not enforcing it, it's not an ordinance.
That, that's why I brought it up, I'm not, I'm not sure how we, I, I'm not denying the need for the sign and the appropriateness of it, but I don't know how to handle that as far as normal business here.
And Bob, what you're saying is that these brackets are already on the buildings.
That, that's correct, if you was to walk around, there are nearly ninety percent of them are then exactly the same. Some are placed higher, some are placed lower, but the bottom edge of the sign is, cannot be any lower than eight feet.
But they stick out the same, that's the question, right?
Did you say there's some variety, I mean, you were talking about old signage brackets, is that what you mean?
Yes, but there's, there's several of these new brackets that's been placed in the past, maybe the past eight years.
Any ordinance issued in the existing bracket, correct?
Um, we have been told that we are to get our own bracket. I've gone to the other businesses around us to ask them where they got theirs, the sizing, all of that, because we're just, we're relying on our neighbors to just do what they've done. I went over and talked with Tori at Urban Market about her signage and ended up with DG Graphics just because she had a wood sign, we didn't want a wood sign. Craig Feneman's office had directed us to DG Graphics because they've done a lot of the other local businesses, so we certainly want to just do what everybody else did.
So this, the way I understand it then is the sign is not done.
The sign is, the, the prototype is done, but we're waiting on approval before we tell them, yes, go ahead and make the sign.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't have anything done yet without approval.
So gentlemen, the, the, to answer your question, we could tell Ms. Cole that the forty three inches has passed outside of our ordinance and bring DG Graphics, we need to bring it down to thirty six inches. And then she can get a bracket made for that sign. And I'm sure that in her defense, she didn't know that the ordinance was thirty six inches, am I correct?
You are correct, and there is no problem to make the adjustment.
So let's do that, because I, I, I like the look of the sign. And I think as we go further down this, we're gonna see that maybe, is there gonna be a color change for the front of your building?
Yes.
So that's coming up, so there's gonna be a color change. The sign looks good, let's just, let's get the dimensions down to the thirty six inches wide. She can get a bracket made for, she can get it okay, get the sign made. And we can move forward, do I hear a motion?
Uh, I would make a motion, Steve Bodie, that we approve docket two five zero one eight for a sign that is no more than thirty six inches long by whatever dimension, height that she'd like, as long as it stays above eight foot over the sidewalk, so we move that we approve it as presented with the exception of thirty six inches in length.
I'll second that.
Kayla Forrester, seconds. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Rich, are you opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Who is opposed?
Rich Bastin. Motion carries. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
And you, and you understand what?
Got it.
On the thirty six instead of forty three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bodie has got to leave before we go to the next item. Docket number PC two five zero one nine, historic district approval for paint color change, address is fifty eight North Main, owner is Artisan Group, Gary Oaks is presenting.
Gentlemen, this is another building that was built by Mr. Feneman on the square and he's proposing a paint color change and there's a sample in the building I've been able to see. I don't know how many of you have been down there and it's on next to Tom Fiddery's building. It's called Turkish Tile, kind of a strange name, Turkish tile, but it's a blue color is what you and I have all called. So that's the building that they're next to Tom Fiddery that is proposed to put a Turkish tile color, blue color on and it'll be trimmed out in white, so that's what we're asking for this evening, Mr. Feneman, would like approval to get that building painted. It's red right now.
So what's, red's gonna be white and then what's, is it gonna be blue, am I reading that right? I'm still confused about this one. Yeah, so, yeah, but it, so the, the building itself is going to be this color, blue, and so then. So what he's got there is, the red's gonna be white.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha.
And in the docket number here, it says fifty eight North Main, but this is the same property, same building that Community Foundation is going in, right?
Yes, it is.
So the correction on that docket number should be eighty eight North Main.
And it's, one of them says East Main, there is such thing as East Main, it's North.
Oh, yeah, when you pulled up on the elevator, it's no, I'm not sure there's an eighty eight.
So it'll be a Turkish.
Turkish tile.
And it's, it's a blue color with white tramp.
Yes.
And that'll be the Community Foundation building.
Yes, it would be.
Can you go ahead and make the other building too? Sorry.
Do we have any questions for Gary on that?
I make a motion that we cut, we pass for a change of the color.
Rich Bastin?
I'll second.
So Rich Bastin made a motion that we approve the color change.
Kayla will second.
No.
Jason.
Jason Scott made a second on it, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, you still up, Gary?
Yeah.
Docket number PC two five zero two zero, historic district approval for paint color change, address is twenty one and twenty seven North Jefferson. Owner is Artisan Group LLC, and this is the building that.
It's been called twenty one, it's been called Main Street Grill, it's, it's the restaurant on the east side of the square. And again, this is the same color, the Turkish tile. And if you're familiar with that building, it's really two buildings and they're painted supposedly the same color, but they, the paint never, never took, got matched at all. So this is, this is painting this, this Turkish tile color and the instructions, the painter is, you gotta, if you have to fill this up straight, whatever you need to do to make the paint color match.
Any questions? Entertaining a motion?
I make a motion that we accept PC number two five zero two zero as presented.
I make a motion that we accept PC number two five zero two zero as presented.
Accepting.
Caleb Forster made a motion that we accept. Rich Bastin made a motion to second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Agreed.
Next, docket PC two five zero two one, historic district approved for a mural. Address is fifty-six East Morgan Street. Legal description, it's owned by Artesian Group in the city of Martinsville. Uh, Mac Porter is the presenter on this. Uh, this is in the alleyway going north on the wall for the, on the new theater. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, as the chair explained, uh, this is to place a, a mural uh, on the side of the civic theater that is, uh, going to be opening very soon. You have in your packet concepts from the artists that were selected, um, to do the work. The work is gonna be painted on panels. They will not be painted on the brick, which is, uh, a little bit different than a lot of murals are done. That way it keeps the integrity of the brick so that in, in time, when the mural reaches its likely, its lifespan, they can be taken down, they can be repainted, and the building will still remain intact. Uh, the work's being done through a grant that we received from the Indiana Arts Commission, so there's no, uh, tax dollars directly involved in this, and, um, so that's where we are.
So there's gonna be two murals, the way I read it?
Yeah, it's two panels. It'll be on either side of, they will, they will straddle the, the, the downspout, basically is the, the way to look at it.
Down the alley, pardon? Down the alley?
Yes, down the alley on the the, on the west side of the theater, uh, on the west side of the alley, east side of the theater.
Are these local artists that are gonna be doing these?
Uh, the gentleman that was selected is from Franklin. Uh, but he has ties and spent a lot of time in Warren County, was very familiar with it. As you can see by his illustrations, he's brought, uh, a Martinsville flair to, to the work, um, of the audience watching the presentation on the stage. We had twen, this, for informational purposes, we had twenty-one applicants, uh, for this project, and the committee narrowed it down to thirteen, I'm sorry, narrowed it down to seven on the first night, and then of those seven, they narrowed it down to, uh, the, the artist from Franklin.
And the same artist is doing both of them?
Yes.
And so they're both there before the building?
Now, once, once, uh, yes.
Right there.
Yes, they'll straddle that, that downspout. And I will say that, uh, when we put out the call for artists, we asked for something that would be about fifty square feet, and he was so excited about the project that he came back with two panels totaling seventy square feet at the same price.
And from what I understand, uh, going to a board of works meeting, this alley has been, uh, decommissioned as an alley. It's gonna be pedestrian only?
It, it, yes, it's indefinitely a pedestrian access only alley.
And the lighting and stuff that was there prior to the build, the lighting will be going back up?
That's my understanding as well.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Porter?
The only I got is, I mean, I don't care about the mural, but how to render it is not quite like this.
No, and I have, yeah, we, we actually, and it may be the copy that you have, because I think mine's a little bit, what I actually printed is a little bit stronger than what the copier did. Uh, I don't know if these show anything's a little better than what you have. This, this one is, is a theater, theatrical presentation with an audience, and you can see cars in the, in this mineral sign in the background into the theater marquee. And then in this one, you have the old time barker with a murals of, of old time movies. Well, I'm sorry, this is a movie, this is a, a live presentation. That's the concept. I do have, if you're interested, I can show you pictures of this finished work, and it is very much, uh, ve- very, very quality. But again, these are just his concepts, um, with pen and, pen and paper.
Sure.
So that you would have something to, to look at.
Counsel, do you have any input on this? It appears as you probably have an office that's looking out towards these murals.
I have no input.
Okay. Just try to lighten the evening up, sir.
But, and it's his lights are the ones that are gonna be lighting up that part of the alley too, so.
Do we have a motion that we accept PC number two five zero two one as presented?
Caleb Forster made a motion that we accept, uh, docket number PC two five zero two one on the mural. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Rich Bastin, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And for the record, Madam Secretary, my first name has a K on the end. It's like Jack, but with an M. So it's M A C K.
M, M A C K?
Correct.
Okay.
There, since there's two Max in this building, it gets a little confusing sometimes, so.
Thank you, sir. Next up, item number seven, docket number PC two five zero two two, plan review. It's address twenty and thirty of Bill's Boulevard. Um, point four seven four acres, and owner is Rihanna, Martinsville LLC?
Yes, it's Rihanna Martinsville.
Okay. If you could sign in, please. Mr. Strater, have they, uh, give all the necessary certifications and those publications?
You, you have some renderings there, and their proposal there in front of you tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is a little bit different. This is for really informational purposes only for the board, just to kind of let you know what's going on. So he's here to give you information on what his plans are. There's really nothing for you to approve tonight. Zonings are in place. Obviously, the buildings have to meet our ordinance for setback and all that. Mr. Strater's been working with, uh, the owner on that, so this is just, uh, really for informational purposes only this evening.
Okay. So, just to give you a little bit of background on the property, um, initially when we bought this, we were, we were gonna retrofit both the buildings. One, one was gonna be a Duncan, other one was gonna be just Jimmy John's. But based on the, looking at how bad the building's shaped, we, now, then we decided to tear it down and put two, uh, freestanding buildings with dry through. And going back and forth with, uh, unfortunately, after a year, uh, that zone was actually categorized as a flood zone area. So now we have to elevate that site to almost four feet, so probably we are adding five, six hundred thousand dollars extra to elevate it. So all in all, we are looking at investment of like five and a half to six million dollars between two buildings, both of them with dry through. Uh, the east building is gonna be Duncan only. The west is gonna be Jimmy John's, and there's a space, twelve hundred square feet. We haven't nailed it down on who that tenant is gonna be. We're looking at possibly like a few pizza places, probably Little Caesar's, but we're not sure. We haven't nailed it down, so that's our plan.
I think there's, is Jimmy John's in what now?
So it's Jimmy John's, uh, it's gonna be on the best, best part of the building.
So we got Jimmy John's and then Duncan, the door.
Glad to see somebody finally doing something with that property.
And Merrill, what he's saying, what he's saying is that after looking at the condition of these buildings, they're gonna have to tear them down. And with them having to tear them down, that sets a new standard. So if I'm understanding this right, Mr. Strater, by them tearing that down, they have to raise the elevation up per the new flood standards for that area. So they're gonna have to elevate that like it, like Derek would have to do. They're gonna have to elevate all that before they can build their new buildings. Uh, because of the flood, which is gonna have added cost. Now, I also understand from what you said was, you've got two buildings, but two anchor businesses, but you've got room for a third?
Yes.
Business that they're, they'll, they'll have room for a third business in that front building?
Uh, in the back building.
In the back building.
The back.
So the back building will have room for a third, um, but they have, they'll, they'll have that option, yeah.
Okay.
So would that be in between the two buildings, you're saying?
Sorry, what?
Would that be in between the two buildings that's shown here?
Uh, it's actually gonna be done. This one, this, this space is pretty done.
Oh, okay, okay, got it, got it.
So as Mr. Coffey said, this is just information, information only, just to let us know what, uh, is going on. They'll be back, uh, once they get things nailed down, is that right, Mr. Coffey? They'll be back and present a.
They won't be back. Uh, they, they don't, there's really no need for them to come back.
Also filming and everything.
Yeah, so, uh, again, just kind of break you up to speed, let you guys know what's going on, and obviously, there's a lot of excitement in this project.
So you're, you're gonna actually have two entrances?
Yes.
So you're.
So one from the Bobby has.
To be in the dead ends there, you wanna cut back and kind of.
Yes.
And you're not gonna be tied into Turkey Hill whatsoever?
No.
Okay.
No, yeah.
Gas station?
Because the gas station has to, in order for them to access there, elevate the site, which.
Okay, well, they're getting ready to move in at once.
Okay, so there's nothing we need to vote on on that?
I'm thrilled you're coming.
Yes, thank you very much.
So it's like, no, 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 no.
We need to make a motion, we need to do it.
Well, I got one thing that I wanna bring up in discussion. We're done.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I got one thing I wanna bring up. Um, in May, we talked about and we approved a change in the ordinance for, uh, the way that stuff was sent out, and I've got my notes all messed up here. Cause I had that. Uh, Mr. Durnell put that up for city council. Uh, city council did, uh, approve that, uh, four to three. So that is something that, uh, as we move forward, that's something that we, we worked on, and we approved and sent it to city council, uh, and they approved it. So that ordinance has been changed, the way that certifications are done. And with that, that's all I've got. Do you entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Rick, Rick, he called motion. Gilbert for a second. Our next regular session meeting, our regular, regular meeting will be Tuesday, August the twenty-sixth at seven PM, meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Do the minutes get signed?
Yes.